Are we ready? Will we begin tonight's meeting?
I'm sorry, I don't have a...
Pledge of the flag.
Yeah, I figured.
Okay.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, and omnipotent.
Stop looking at yourself.
You hear me start it back?
Have a good day.
Today I have a motion to approve the village board meetings for the meeting of October 20th, 2022.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Any... Think I add to those minutes?
Nope.
Adjustments, corrections or whatever? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Carry. Public comment. We welcome Matt Hunt, President of the Greater Barnsville Chamber of Commerce, tonight to speak to us.
Hey Curtis, good evening board, Mr. Mayor, thank you everyone. Before I get into that, just say I love the discussion of the island sign change. I personally thought maybe we should put it out to bid, have a sponsor like domes and amphitheaters do, and then use that to upgrade the electric so we don't blackout during events, but... We haven't had a problem in the last couple of years, so, but that'll look really nice, that especially boaters coming in, and so I'm glad to hear that. So thank you coming here tonight on behalf of the Greater Barnsville Chamber of Commerce and also our partners in the event, the Rotary, Roder Club of Barnsville, to seek permission to use of Mercer Park for the 16th Annual V-Ville Big Chill. If you're not familiar, this annual event we do where crazy people plunge into the Central River in January. To date, 16 years, we've had close to 1,700 people have made the plunge. Some of those have probably been repeats. Between the Chamber, Rotary, and our prior nonprofit partner, we've raised and put into the community over $280,000. So we're also looking with that event to waive open container, I believe, and waive the park fee. So pretty standard event, same as usual, we'll have a tent with best involved featuring some of our eateries around town here, community voting on who their favorite food vendor is, folks plunging into the river, followed that evening by a pub crawl here in town. In general, the plunge itself brings about 400 to 500 people into the village, and the pub crawl generally is 300 to 400, so bring quite a bit into town. It was a nice community event, and looking forward to having it again. Any questions?
I'm hoping we have weather like this all the way to January.
That'd be awesome, yeah.
We'll have a beach on it. I haven't had any, I'm familiar with it.
Yeah, we're pretty standard. I think everybody's pretty familiar at this point, so...
Becoming part of the public is a little...
Yeah, absolutely. Keeps us busy between us and Taste of V-Ville, we don't get much of a breather, so...
Now, so, do you want to do a resolution then to waive...
And I did already submit all the paperwork and insurance.
So we need a motion to waive the parks fees?
And...
And establish an open container?
Establish an open container for the hours of...
Noon to 3?
Why don't we say 4?
4.
And just in case you need help, Mike Johnson from WT Brewers will be doing the alcohol, so he'll be taking care of his part of that as well. A resolution can't have 3-ish in it, I don't think. All right, noon to 4, please.
Make a motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Is there anything else we need to... I know typically you have support from our DPW, Chuck Drives out in the...
Ambulance corps usually is on, so...
The police departments. Okay.
What's going in for us, Eric or Hank?
I've done it before, I'll do it again.
Yeah, I've done it for some, for some silly family, my mother was still...
Mr. Stevens, if I remember correctly, the previous mayor jumped in, Mayor Sartini.
Could be.
Probably the previous mayor, so...
No pressure there.
The current mayor, maybe the current mayor?
You know, this is a fundraising event, we can raise a goal, and if the community reaches it, then someone has to plunge in the river.
The CEO of the community, wouldn't you think?
Yes, yeah, someone. It would be a large number, we set a very high goal.
We should add that to the resolution, yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, motion is carried. Thank you, Matt.
Thank you both, thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you board, appreciate it, have a good night.
Good for you, Matt.
You too, thank you.
Good to see you, Matt.
Thank you, too.
Okay, moving along, we...
Sally, have anything to say?
Sally, do you want to say anything tonight?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
I might grocery shop in, I don't go all the time.
Me either.
And there's still a lot of really empty shelves in grocery stores. I don't know if you noticed, but I'm like, if people are... If COVID has taught us nothing, hasn't it taught us that we need to have more food security in our neighborhood? And if we're building on all the farmland, how's that gonna look? It's just a question, doesn't have to be answered tonight, but I just wanted to put it out there because I think it's important. We need food. And if, you know, the supply chain's still broken, I don't, I don't know why there's so many empty shelves, but I just thought I'd mention it.
Basically, okay. Now moving along to trustees comments. Eric, you're up.
I'm sure that our sporting teams are gonna get their nod here, I'll let you guys do all that because we've got some good success in sports, but it's theater time, too, and my daughter, my daughter doing My King Jr., so I'm just gonna give a plug for theater arts and, you know, there's a lot of talented kids out there working their butts off, so go to, check out theater, we have awesome theater in this community, and it's getting cold now, so now's the time to go see some shows.
And I'll stick to the agenda.
Just the agenda for me, thank you.
I'm sticking to the agenda also.
Just wanted to mention the tree lighting and the parade of lights on November 26th. The parade starts at 5:30, and there will be an after-party at the library for the kids to meet Santa Claus immediately following the tree lighting, and that's it.
All right, sports teams are going live, yeah, all that stuff, yeah, as far as what Eric said, but I do want to remind everybody to vote next Tuesday in the state and local election. That's very important, it's gonna, this is a huge election for not only the state but the country as well, so... Yep, and after that, stick to the agenda.
And don't forget to turn your ballot over, there's a bond issue on the back.
Yeah, yeah, there is a back, just like this agenda we have today, there is a back, so...
Daylight saving time ends this weekend, too.
We're not gonna mention that. Maybe mayor. Turning it over to you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, I echo Nate's recommendation for people to get on vote Tuesday. Don't forget to set your clock back at 2 o'clock Sunday morning, not so late. If you want sunshine, you got 5 o'clock in the morning because by 5 o'clock, it's not gonna be dark. Don't want you to forget that, though. Couple of get well notes, want the trustee Shepherd, who's under the weather, he was going to try to participate by Zoom and just didn't feel good enough to do that. And our deputy dispatcher, Dick Long, I just found out that several weeks ago, he had a mishap with a ladder and was laid up for about three months. And if you know Mina, great guy, just wish him all the best and hope he's doing better. This weekend, Friday through Sunday, is the library book sale, great place to stock up on your winter reading. Ruth mentioned the Christmas tree lighting. Then there's also a, the Christmas Bureau is getting ready to, it's a massive undertaking. They do a tremendous job serving many, many people, but they can't serve you if you don't tell them you need help. So on the 4th and 5th of November, which would be, what, tomorrow and Saturday, from 9 to noon, and on the 8th and 9th of November, from 4 to 7, at St. Mark's Church. If you're a parent or a family member or somebody that knows about a family, to show up at St. Mark's and sign up, and you should go on our Facebook site or on the Barnsville Christmas, what is it, Christmas Bureau site? They have some of the things you have to write, you have to frame proof of income and show a level of income you're at because they obviously don't want millionaires showing up asking for help, but it's a tremendous service. I'm sure a lot of you have been over to where they're operating and seen the massive effort to get, you know, up to 170, 180 families, hundreds. So in addition to signing up to get help, always feel free to donate to the Christmas Bureau. They have lists of toys they need, they can use cash to buy stuff for people, they give families food and gifts for kids. It's just, again, it's one of those things that makes you very proud of the community and doesn't just happen, so... Let me see if there's anything else ahead of my list, I think so. All set, thank you.
Dick, I'll just follow up on the Christmas Bureau thing. For the last several years, the Christmas Bureau has been located over in the River Mall. This year, we're gonna be in a new location, which is on the school district property, the old facilities building just below the district office, so you can go in on the entrance off of Albert Palmer Lane. It's where we've been voting for school district elections the last couple of years, so you will find us over in River Mall this year, you'll find us on the, on the school property.
Yeah, the Christmas Bureau is part of the volunteer center.
It is part of the volunteer center.
Drop off financial contributions, they can go to Loop Road Town Hall.
Loop Road Town Hall, yes.
Street 1 or B or something.
The far, the far left end of the, of the building.
Throw it to the town clerk and they'll point you in the right direction.
Thanks for that.
And also, speaking of Lyssander Municipal Building and the Don't Forget to Vote, you can also do early voting through this weekend at Lyssander Town Hall. That's it.
Okay, we're done with mayor's comments.
I never think of anything until after every mail stopped.
And we'll move on to department heads, starting with our attorney.
I'll stick with the agenda.
Village Clerk?
Yes, I just wanted to say that, well, the new deputy clerk starts on November 14th. Training for the new village clerk is going quite well. At this point, we're no longer collecting for village taxes, they've been, we're, tonight, later in the agenda, we're turning them over to the county for collection. So you can pay your taxes through the 15th of November at the county, and then after that, they'll be levied on your town and county taxes. And I believe that is it. Anyone who has any questions?
Do you know how many more village board meetings we will be privileged to have you attending in this capacity?
I believe five.
Five? Who's counting?
I just say the count.
Okay, moving on to the treasurer.
All right, just a couple things, probably all unaware, but I'll remind everybody the budget starts right now and goes until November 22nd is when I'm gonna ask everybody to have it back to, to me and compile it for, I think, a work meeting, which we're gonna set earlier later in this meeting, and I, I think we're probably looking at December 1st because there was a board meeting that night. So that's, that's a little aggressive schedule for the department heads, but I think they lived with that last year, too, so I think it'll be fine. Item number two is, I just wanted to, to kind of let the department heads know and the board know, there's been a couple, three, four new hires this year that were not budgeted new hires. There are, there are things that came up during the year, one is, of course, malls retirement, a couple of SROs, which would be funded by the school, but those impact the budget in terms of needing to modify the budget on the, on the salary lines. And so I see it in the minutes that there's like an hour later that they're approved at, but I think one of the things we have to get accustomed to is, how many hours are they gonna work for the remainder of this budget year? And so what do we think the impact to the budget's gonna be? And, and in the case of like the SROs, there's, there's not really a budget impact except that will record the expense because that's gonna be paid for. But the other things, we, we have to look around in there and see how we're gonna pay for those things. And that's certainly not a statement about the worthiness of the, of the hire, it's just fact of the matter. So just a mental reminder about that. And the last thing is, I've poked around with a couple of the other villages in central New York about their abstract process, and I'd like to change our abstract process just a little. I don't think it's gonna affect you at all, but I'd like to publish our abstracts, proposed abstract with the agenda, so it's in the public record, the approved abstract with the minutes, so that it's available online for people to see what we're spending money on. I'm also gonna ask the department heads to have everything into us by Wednesday morning before a board meeting, so that we have time to get it compiled and reviewed, because this time of year especially, as we start to come toward the end of the budget year, we start to exceed or technically possibly exceed some budget lines where we have to make transfers. And those transfers are gonna be done every board meeting. I wanna get in the habit of, we're gonna present an abstract to you for approval and also a list of transfers that will fund that abstract. So it's not like we're, we're coming back around a week or a month later after the horse is out of the barn and saying, oh yeah, we can modify the budget now, and maybe somebody will object to that. The Controller's Office told me, if a board member objects to that and it doesn't get passed and you've paid the bill, that could potentially be a problem for you. So those two functions should really go hand in hand. The approval of the abstract and the authorization of the budget transfers to fund it, if anything's going over budget.
Now, can I be ignorant here? I'm familiar with the use of abstract in scientific papers and stuff. What are, what are you referencing when you're gonna create an abstract?
Well, the, the bill paying process that is done through a process that's called an abstract in the village, so that list of invoices that, that you approve for payment is called an abstract.
Yeah, all the vouchers that are signed are compiled into one, into like four sheets.
So we would attach to the minutes, just like the log of those, that says who was paid and what the short description was of what was done and what the amount was and the budget line item that it hit. That is a public record. We'd attach the proposed one to the agenda, so anyone coming to the meeting would be able to review it. We would attach the approved one to the minutes, so that anyone looking back at their minutes would be able to review it. And the budget transfers would be listed. Instead of me preparing what I've done the last few meetings where I've put this thing together, there would just be a chart in there that would say, I'll use as an example, police overtime needs to be increased and, and we're gonna decrease police salary. So we make that transfer to fund that overtime line. And there's not a lot of them, I looked at the abstract for tonight and nothing exceeds the budget, so, but I know we're getting to where a lot of line items are, especially discretionary ones, are coming up to where they're, they're potentially gonna be in that territory as we get closer to the end of the budget year. And it's, it's a pretty common process. I've heard like the county legislature does it every meeting, where they, they go in and negotiate different changes and they modify the budget accordingly for a lot of budget lines.
That'll be good for the board because as trustees, you know, CDPW, I don't see police unless you're out of town.
Right.
But, because that way we'd all be seeing everything.
Okay, thanks. And that's it.
Senior Center Coordinator.
I just would like this board to be aware that I've been asked by the town of Van Buren to provide data on who comes to the senior center, visits and so on, based on where folks live, so I just want you to be aware that that will be happening and plan to provide that information at the next Cantwood's board meeting, which will be December 1st, when all three municipal reps would be present, seemed like the most efficient way to share that. So I just wanted to be aware of that. Also, we want to remind folks once again, for home delivered Christmas meal, the deadline is December 2nd, so if you would like to receive a meal delivered to your home on the Christmas holiday, please call our neighborhood advisor Nancy Sullivan at the senior center, she'll take care of that for you. And also our wreath sale is happening, so if anybody needs a nice fresh wreath for their home or business, give us a call and we'll take care of that. It is a local merchant that provides a wreath, so that's, helps out in that way as well, so... That's it, unless anybody has any questions. Thank you.
Moving along to our superintendent public works.
A big thing going on now, as I don't know, is there's a park pickup and the phones ringing off the hook, you know, we're out every day, there's tons and tons of leaves out there, actually the people are raking behind us as we're going through. They've been out all week and they haven't got, they haven't got through one side of the river yet. I mean, there's just that much, and it's, it's that time of year and that's just the way it is. One interesting thing that we get asked a lot is the guys in the, in the machines, they'll smash the pumpkins, or if the pumpkins start rolling down the road, they'll smash them, and we're asking why they're chasing pumpkins. Well, people put their pumpkins in the, in the leaf pile, and when they go to pick them up, if, if they, if they miss them, they run down the road, they rent them a car. We have troubles with that, I mean, it seems kind of crazy, and when people see us doing it, they're like, why are they smashing these? It's because we can have them go up and cause trouble, cause problems, but they're, we're getting asked as best we can, it's probably gonna be midweek before we get on the south side of the river, but they're out at 7 o'clock in the morning, back in at 3.
I'd like to give kudos to the residents that keep the leaves on their property as opposed to putting them out in the street. Going down the Swiggo Street, before you guys came through, there was 10 feet of a Swiggo Street that was leaves.
Yeah, 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 I can handle it, you can't hardly get a car down, they're all up at the same time, but, but we're getting through as best we can, and that's where I would... Easter night at Downey Mechanic Street, we had that dug up again this week, we, we had a leak underneath the, the creek there, we had a tarot, he came in, they did a fantastic job, they dug through, instead of directional boring, it was cheaper just to dig through the water, bring it up on the other side, they did it three hours, a fantastic job, we're currently just waiting on water testing, they have to pressurize the pipe and test it, we're waiting for that, we'll turn that back on again. The water guys go over, got it paved, traditionally that's a highway job, but they got a couple guys from the highway because we just can't pull anybody off a brush right now. But we got that paved and they're looking at, we're gonna probably fix the sidewalks in that project, too, to get that done, but that went really well, the water raft project is done for the winter. We've had some really big storms and we didn't have any problems with that, we're really happy with that project. Contractors are gonna come back and do a lot of grading and stuff, and he knows that. And then the detention pond up there on Smoky Hollow Road that we did, that's fantastic, the, we didn't, we weren't able to get in there for years, and now we gotta cut down the drain, got the water draining better, the homeowners are mowing it, and that, and some of these jobs are what we're using the armpit money for, and it's just working out fantastic. The parks will be closed Monday, we left them open, we're gonna close them this week, but because it's so nice, the bathrooms will still be open Monday, or out till Monday, then we'll close them for the season, they'll be done. We're also doing meter testing, the large meters, the business owner is responsible for those, and there's a company that's, that's in there and he's tested them all, it's got a little bit of confusion with some of the, some of the property owners, but that's normal. The village is responsible from inch, inch meter down and from inch above, it's, it's the homeowner, and they haven't tested in quite a few years, and some of them are failing miserably, which is, that's why we do them, and they're gonna have to replace the meter, we're in the middle of that, we're getting a lot of calls on that, but once we get that done, that should be good. Other than that, unless there's questions? We went through our, our tree list, too, we're hoping that's gonna go out to bid, we've got some really good trees that gotta come down, Miss Sharon Bruce, and, and went out with us, with our, our, he was, he's a great guy, and he's really helped us out with that program a lot. And one of the ways to, to see how well the programs work is we've had a lot of big windstorms this year, we haven't had a lot of trees down. You know, we're staying ahead of it, we're trying to stay, I don't know, we took almost 200 trees down last year, but with the ash board, we're trying to stay ahead of it, and he's a big help with that. Other than that, unless there's questions, we're good.
No questions, so move on to our police chief.
We were conducting an investigation about complaints regarding people smashing pumpkins and, so now we all have to... We can close that in last hour. A lot of people know.
Solved.
Another case solved, absolutely. Couple things, just to remind folks, starting on November 15th, the village's night ban parking goes into effect. So from 1:30 in the morning until 6:00 AM, you can't park on the roadways. Truly, in, in effect, we don't really start waiting until after 1:30 because, I mean, the bars are open till 2, so it's actually afternoon, but again, the reason for that is because Chuck and his team need to be able to get out and plow the roads. And we can't have cars on roadway, so that way his folks can, can get our roadways clear when it snows. So we're gonna start issuing warning tickets now, just to let everyone know, hey, that's coming, starting on the 15th. We really won't start writing tickets until the snow flies, but when it does, we're gonna have to write tickets just to reinforce with folks to, to get the car off the roadway. Want to let everyone know that, just like for at least my entire time here for 35 years, there's gonna be a turkey trot on Thanksgiving Day, and that's gonna impact some, some roads being closed along that route. So just be aware, village residents, of the, of the road closings that are gonna be going on during the time period, a little bit before the race, probably starting at about 20 minutes tonight, until 10, 10:30 in the morning for that race route along Knighty Street and, and, and the rest of the route that it trails, Artillery Lane and up over Chaucer and some of the brown tract and into Camerwick. And then the 10K goes outside the village, but we don't close the roads there. So just keep that in mind. And then two days later on Saturday is the Parade of Lights event. Again, we're gonna have some roads closed in the evening on that Saturday due to that event, so just keep that in mind, please make some alternate plans, if you have people coming over or you need to get out, just know that that's gonna be a little bit problematic on, on those particular days. And then lastly, SafeWatch is apparently an independent review site, I received a notification that we've been ranked as the 44th safest community in New York State and the only one in the central New York area that we're so recognized, so it's nice to see, see that recognition by somebody, keep your tabs on those types of things. Most of the agencies, most of the communities, we're downstate in Long Island, but they rank the top 50 and we're very glad to be in there, so... Other than that, I do have an agenda item tonight to speak to, to our treasurer's comment regarding what Kathy Walsh is gonna be working for us, she's gonna be working the hours that Dick would have been working, so she'll be picking up with Dick, so there won't be any impact to the budget item. So she'll be picking up with Dick, so there won't be any impact to the budget on, on that. So that's the purpose for her and I can speak more to her when we get to that. Lester's questions? Thank you very much.
Okay, moving along to pending business? We have none. We like that. So to new business. They have a motion designating the following office as vacant at the end of the current official year to be filled at the village elections to be held Tuesday, March 21st, 2023, for the following term, village justice for a term of five years.
Moved.
Second.
Okay, what did I just read? We're designating an office, the judge's office is vacant so he can run? Is that what?
Yes, at the end of the year.
Have you ever done that before?
After a year we have to.
Do we do this?
Yeah.
I missed that.
Yeah, by certain, we have to have resolutions stating the vacancies.
Okay.
Usually there's three or four.
Yeah, this is not a, this is the last non-general election that we'll have.
Exactly.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. A motion, may I have a motion adopting a resolution identifying that the polling place of the March 21st, 2023 village election is Village Hall, 16 West Genesee Street, and the hours of the polls will be open are from 12 noon until 9 PM.
Make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
Again, it's just nearly a thing we have to put.
Yeah, it seems like nine hours to come and vote for the judge, it only takes one person. But whatever. They have a motion to turn over the list of 2022 unpaid water and sewer bills for the town of Lysander Water Districts in the amount of $9,595.47 to the town of Lysander for collection.
Moved.
Second. Is this the first year that we've had it with the district thing, that we've done this? Or we do this?
No, we've, we've.
Okay.
We've taken over Lysander, I think, a few years ago.
How many years have you been here?
Well, I know we did that here. Lysander, this, this district stuff is weird to me. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Carried. A motion to turn over the list of 2022 unpaid water and sewer bills for the Maple Road Water District in the amount of $3,949.28 to the town of Van Buren for collection.
Moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. They have a motion to set a budget work session for the March 1st, 2023 through February 28th, 2024 village budget.
You guys thought the date?
Yeah. When you make that motion, you got to come up with the date.
December 1st.
We weren't quite sure on, sure on the date, that's why the date isn't listed.
He just said December 1st.
It's my birthday, Mo.
I was originally going.
So.
I'm so sorry.
About December 2nd.
You'd rather do the 8th?
It would be Friday.
Well, I was going to do the 8th, but I was told that's not really a board meeting and so, you know.
Let's see, I would always like to not be on a board meeting night.
Oh, cool.
I would, I would yield to the 8th if you insist.
Well, I'm just, I'm just one trustee.
Yeah.
Don't mind me.
A discussion was needed, that's why I didn't put it in.
I can't do the 8th, but I, I agree, I would prefer it being something other than a board night.
We want to push it back too far because we have deadlines and we have to meet, when we have to present a preliminary budget, that type of stuff, so.
Does that have to be a day that week, or for you?
Yeah, I could do any other day that week, I'd just have another.
Does that work for everyone else or?
Board meeting on the 8th.
Yeah.
I'm fine with that. That work for you?
What day are you doing?
We're looking at Tuesday or Wednesday, 6 and 7. I don't know when court is, that's the other.
The published process recommends that the department's heads have until the 1st of December to provide the budget to me or the clerk, and then I would assemble it for use at a work session. We backed the process up a little so that we could do the 1st of December, but if, if you don't want to do that, it will give the department heads, a couple of them right there have sizable budgets, you know, very involved budgets, and so.
Mo, do you know when this space is available for us though? Because of court and other board meetings and? I don't know, I don't know any of that. Does that time frame work for you?
It'd be the first Tuesday and first Wednesday of the month.
I'm assuming you don't want to do a Monday.
Do they have court on that? Does the, does the court? I don't think they have the courts, no. So I think it's, I think this room's available.
They didn't fill out the December calendar.
Why don't you shoot for the 6th and then if you got to carry over, you finish up on the 7th. You may not need to, you may get it done on the 6th.
Yeah, it's the 6th.
It's fine.
It works.
Okay, so the motion now is?
December 6th.
What time?
Well, in the past it's been 5:30, but that's because we have to stop for the board meeting, so.
Just do 5:30.
5:30 is fine.
6.
6.
Which?
6. Ruth's got to have dinner.
No.
I got to have dinner too, you're right.
They have to get home from the city.
In the past, we've had dinner here.
It's a for you.
Yeah, it's the 6th.
Thank you.
So the 6th, that's 6?
Yep.
That would be great. Thank you.
Okay.
So Mark, do you still need those by the 22nd then? Or can we have a few more days?
No, you can have a few more.
All right.
You can have a few more days, I'll, I'll send a, an email and a memo out to all of you to give you the official, but I would say you could go to the 1st now and then I would, that would give me some time to get it together by the 6th though.
Okay, great.
Okay, so the motion is we'll have a budget, whatever that says, the budget work session on December 6th at 6:00 PM. Yep. Everybody in agreement with that? All in favor? Do we need a motion? Is this a motion?
Who wants it?
Well, make a motion.
Thank you.
And that's open to the public, right?
Yes.
So I'll need to post a legal notice.
Okay. Item F. Could I have a motion to declare the following item?
Can we all vote on that?
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Not really.
Moving on to item F. Now, a motion to declare the following items as surplus, the just, from the Justice Court, a non-working brother printer, from Camwoods, two obsolete Dell monitors, the DPW, a 2007 Ford Focus. Do you want the VIN number?
No, as long as I don't take one of the minutes, it's okay.
You did it last time.
And Chuck, do you want to add with a fractured frame?
Actually, actually that vehicle was Officer Dell's vehicle way back when, when she was an investigator, and then it went to Steve and then it went to, then it was a couple of years we didn't use it, then Greg was using it and the frame just separated and they're just.
Okay, well, I'm thinking of the non-working brother and the obsolete Dells, we might as well have the.
Yeah.
It's both obsolete and non-working.
Could I have a motion?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any one opposed? Carried. Item G, a motion to accept the resignation of member Jonathan Ream effective October 31st, 2022 from the zoning board of appeals. I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
You all in favor? Just wanted to discuss real quick, thank Jonathan for his service, that's all. Okay, now are you in favor? No, I'm in favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. They have a motion to appoint ZBA alternate, Rocco Nally, as member of the zoning board of appeals board, effective immediately.
Make a motion.
Second. Give us a question? You want to say anything? I'll welcome, oh, welcome Rocco to the zoning board.
Does this mean, Dick, that we now have the opening for someone who might want to be the alternate?
Yep.
Yeah, an alternate gets to take part quite often because somebody can't make the meeting and the alternate participates, so it's a, it's a necessary position.
So anyone who's interested should reach out to you or to someone else.
Probably call Greg first. Greg Humphrey, court officer, has now had questions about what might you need speed. Greg's the perfect one to talk to.
Great. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried. Item I, a motion to appoint Catherine Walsh as a part-time communications officer at a pay rate of $15.80 per hour, effective November 5th, 2022.
Make a motion.
Second.
Discussion.
Yeah, as I said, she's just going to fill in while Dick is convalescing and she's retired from the 911 center. Her husband's retired, Gettys Police Chief Mike Walsh, so she's very familiar with law enforcement and I think she'll help out greatly for us.
Very good. And any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Motion J, a motion authorizing the mayor to sign the affidavits of collection reconciliation, turning over the list of unpaid village taxes for the tax year 2022 to 2023 in the amount of $58,758.13, the town of Van Buren properties, $22,903.41, town of Lysander properties are $35,854.72 to Andai County for collection.
Moved. Second.
Any discussion? Did you want to say?
No, I was just going to, you know, so this is what we did not collect for this tax season, so we turn it over to the county now.
Now I have a question. Yes, and I've been here a long time and I figured you'd forgotten everything. Does this include anything other than real estate taxes? Somebody who's not paid their sidewalk a lot?
Right, if it was on their tax bill, it's included in this figure.
All right, thank you. Anybody else have a question?
Not really.
You knew it all.
I was impressed.
Okay, all in favor?
I just didn't think to ask.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Carried. I guess, could I have a motion to pay bills as audited?
Yeah. Make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And next time you can have a list in front of you.
Yeah.